Okay, good evening. Welcome to this August 7th, 2023, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. To begin, I call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
... United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy. Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Bossen. Hildebrandt.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change. There's been a citizen request to remove items 10, 13, and 14 from consent to the full agenda. So do I have a motion with that change?
I'll make the motion with that change.
I'll second that.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item six, we'd look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
Second.
Motion second. No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, then we begin with item 10. We look for a motion to consider approval of the Parks and Recreation Board recommendations to include landscape designs and combining boards.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. And to kick off discussion on this with some background, we'll hear from Nate Powell, our Parks and Rec Director.
Okay, there was two items on the Parks and Rec Board that they approved for recommendation. One was the landscape design for First and Brash. In that design, there was three options that we originally had, and staff had decided on one that we brought forward to the board, and they did approve that at our last meeting. And that should be before you there. The other one was the Parks and Recreation Board recommending the board serve as a trail advisory board. That is a recommendation. That would take a while for us to make any changes. If staff chooses to do so, we would bring that in, and city ordinance update and a change, which would take us several months to get to that point if we even decide to go down that road. So, right now, it's just a recommendation. We're considering it, and we'll bring something to council if the, if something comes forward. Any other questions?
Nate, can you clarify the second part there? So there was consideration of the Trails Board officially being absorbed into the Parks and Recreation Board, is that right?
That's correct.
And so that action, no action was taken, but the recommendation is being considered?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Nate?
This action today would approve that. Parks and Rec would...
No, that would be a city ordinance change. It's just a, it's just approving that, that you're aware that they've, they've recommended it, but we wouldn't be able to change anything until we brought an ordinance change forward, is my understanding.
I don't, okay, thank you. I, I did sit in on the Parks and Rec Board meeting, and it looked, and then I looked it up while I was in there, of the Trail Advisory Board. It looked like everybody was, their term had expired on that also, on that board.
That's correct.
Did they not want to be on the board anymore? Did we reach out and contact them?
We have, we have not reached out. We haven't reached out for direction yet. We were just having some conversations with staff this week on who's responsible for what parts of the trails, because some of it falls under engineering, other parts fall under parks, depending on where, what, what we're working on. If we're designing and building a road, it's going to be a little different topic than, than working on a trail within a park.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Any public input?
I guess, just to appreciate you taking these off, consent, the...
Please state your name for the record.
Excuse me, Jim McKenzie. The approval on the roundabout landscaping, it's not a big deal, but the duties as specified in the Parks and Rec Board City Code are for parks, and the roundabout is public right of way. And so, just making you aware that, do you want to go this, and do we continue on this board overseeing other public rights of way? It's just a question of where that board is going. It's a, it's a minor issue, but I just thought it was, it's a new board, and before we go too far, is it proper to establish some parameters or not? Just wanted to bring that up. And then regarding, regarding the trail board, I, I was confused as to what we're approving. I mean, if we're approving the recommendation to absorb the parks board, excuse me, the trails board, but there's no, there's no ordinance to actually dissolve the trail board and merge it into the parks board. I just, I was just curious, I couldn't understand what we're approving in this motion, so it was confusing to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I think those are fair questions, both. The, maybe, maybe we can ask for some clarification as to how the First Street Roundabout did come onto the agenda, the Parks and Rec Board, given that there's proximity and timing in conjunction with Johnson Park and Riverfront, but as Jim stated, this is not necessarily parks property. Can, do I have staff that wants to comment on that?
I'll start, and Nate can step in. So, within our right of way, we do have areas of right of way that are maintained by Parks Department, as well as areas that are maintained by Street Department. Where it is just generally mowing, that is Street Department, but where we have more the enhanced right of way landscaping, those areas are taken care of by the Parks Department. So, kind of through downtown, area where we've got the flower beds and the medians, that type area. Benjamin Avenue, again, with the enhanced landscaping, those, those flower beds and stuff within the street right of way will be maintained by Parks Department.
Okay, thank you.
I can comment also.
Sure.
Previously, that would have just come across my desk and asked for my approval.
Okay.
I think it's better to bring it to a board, bring it to a public comment, and have, allow people to come in and comment on what we're approving, rather than just coming from just staff.
Yeah. And, and the relevance there, too, is that, so that particular public right of way, like, like the downtown terraces, like pockets of landscaping throughout the downtown and community, are maintained by Parks and Rec staff?
Our, yeah, our roundabout at 25th and Benjamin's a good example. That's all ma, that's maintained by parks.
It's better to have the public involved in these, in these decisions.
Okay, and then the comment on the Trails Board, yeah?
So, I'll just, I can let Nate talk about the Trails Board and kind of where all that came from, I believe. You know, we have, they're all vacant positions, and that, some of those positions haven't been filled for, are long overdue for being filled. So I think for efficiency, I think parks look at, at some of those, but Nate can weigh in more on that. I think this is a good, this is a good point that was brought up, and I think sometimes as a staff, we get kind of buried in this, but we kind of forget, like, sometimes how things are worded. So I think going forward, we'll probably change this agenda item, because I believe the intent of this is purely for notification to the council as to what the board's been talking about. That's it. Just so you know, you know their minutes, you know what they talked about, you're aware of what they've, you know, what they're going to be sending to you, and what you'll be seeing on the future agenda. This is just kind of one of those heads up, like, hey, they talked about this, there might be an agenda item coming down the road to come to you later, after some more discussion. So, I think we can change the wording of this, maybe, because I, I do, I do see this, approval of the recommendations. Like, I think that's a very fair point, that in effect. But I believe, Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, this is really just to keep council informed as to what the board's been talking about, open that communication. The public's been invited to the Parks Board meeting, that there's been that dialogue, and you're just notifying the council as to what it is that they've, that they've talked about.
Yep, we should be, we'll be clear on what needs to come back to council, and what's not going to need to come back to council. The, the roundabout, I don't think would come back to council, but the, the Tree Advisory Board would. So we'll make sure we're clear on that.
The Trails, yeah.
The Trail, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think I'd agree. That's why I asked the question initially when you were up here, Nate, and I think that's the same question Jim was asking, too, is what are we approving here? It's not quite clear.
We'll, we'll be clear on what has to come back to council, or what we have to bring forward. Fees would be something that would come forward to council after they've made their recommendation, and we would, we would clarify that in the, in the staff memo.
I can, because the intent of this wasn't, I don't know how we handle this agenda item, can this be changed to approval of the, of report from the Parks Board meeting? I mean, really, that's what this is, it's a report, and you're getting a report from them, just as you would from, you know, any, any board, or a lot of elected bodies get reports. Or what do we have to do technically, Danny, with this agenda item?
It seems...
Sorry, guys. Counsel, if you could just give me one minute so I can look at it, so I can advise properly.
It would seem like an amended agenda item could state that the council's considering approval of the Parks and Recreation Board report. That includes landscape designs and combining boards? Any other questions for Nate while he's here? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Do I hear then an amendment as such?
I could make appro, or make consideration, consideration of approval as amended of the port, the Park Board's meeting agenda. Does that sound right?
That works.
Meeting minutes, agenda meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay, motion and second. Further discussion? Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And we have to vote on the other line, motion, or, that? Or is it passed as amended? Assessment?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So we can proceed then to item number 13. Look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023-37, authorizing submittal of the blight and substandard determination study for the Norfolk downtown area to the Planning Commission for Review and Recommendation.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution 2023-37.
Second.
Motion and second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Candace Alder, our Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have in front of you a blight study that we're proposing you pass along to the Planning Commission, as is the normal process. This is going to go toward the Planning Commission for a public hearing, and then it goes to the City Council for a public hearing. So there's a couple different opportunities for people to speak on this. Now, the downtown district is already declared blighted and substandard, but that last study was done in 2010, and in order to apply for downtown revitalization funds, under the national objective for blight and substandard, your blight study can be no more than 10 years old. And so this is just a reexamining of that study area, just to ensure that those blight and substandard criteria still exist in the area.
Is this area the same as the last blight and substandard area?
Yes. There's a, a little tweak. Randy, you can give the tweak if you'd like. It's...
Yep, we had Forest Street included in both this blight and substandard area, and then the Riverside Boulevard blight and substandard area, so we removed it from this area, so it wasn't in both. That's the main change. And there's, in the southeast corner, there's a slight little change as to how that is defined, and I don't think it amounts to hardly anything square footage-wise, but it is slightly different. But the main change was removal of Forest Street as you go north from the post office. It was in both the Riverside Boulevard area and this area.
Just so they didn't overlap, is that why?
Yes, this removes that overlap.
Right.
Any further questions?
So, have some of these pictures of the enclosure 13 are in our...
They're really so shitty are downtown.
And I realize they were taken on the, the first of the month, but are some of these, I don't know, I'm questioning if some of these are getting a little to the nitpicky side when they're taking pictures of our streets in enclosure 22, and that's being repaired as we speak. Then there's a few other ones. There's a storm drain that we're taking, the pictures of ours, the city, city would be responsible for. There is some buildings in here that we're taking pictures of that are expected to be removed with the, with the new Wayne State College campus, is my understanding, so.
You're just speaking to the...
And then we have some construction material sitting around for the new apartment being built for the Wayne State College students. So, I guess I have, some of these pictures, I guess, I, in my opinion, are a little misleading of if they're going to be handled or taken care of in the, in the short term, why, why are we, I guess, why are we taking pictures of them to be removed or to be replaced in city utilities?
Well, Jeff Ray is not present tonight to answer those questions. I think what, when they go out and do...
Did Nina, sorry, did Nina do this study?
No. JEO did this study.
Oh, this is the study JEO, I'm sorry.
Nope. No, Nina usually does our studies, but they were not able to do this one. So, he would not have known some of those city projects, and I think when they're going out and doing that windshield assessment of the area, they're looking for any conditions that would qualify under that blight and substandard criteria.
And what is, just for public record, what is, what is the criteria for blight and substandard properties?
You will see on, and I don't know what your page numbers are, but there's a chart within this study. It looks like this.
Correct.
And these are the different areas that they're going to be looking at when they try to make determination on whether an area is declared blighted.
That's page 79 for your...
Thanks, Danny. So, criteria under blight, you see structure conditions, street layouts, faulty lot layout, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site, diversity of owners, tax special assessment, titles, conditions, obsolete plating, endanger to life or property, any combination, age of structures. And then the substandard criteria, exterior age, inadequate provision for ventilation sanitation, and then they have some of those other substandard criteria listed there, too.
Candace, can you talk about why a blight study, an updated blight study for the downtown area might be important? Blight, of course, relates to tax increment financing in some regards, but also has implications for things like community development block grant applications, correct?
Yeah, so, this would be the area, this is, this would be the national objective that we would need to qualify under in order to apply for any more downtown revitalization grants, which is next on the agenda when we go into public hearing. And so, we're really looking at the different ways that we can qualify Norfolk to receive those funds and remain competitive with other communities.
And, well, you probably talked about it on the next agenda item, but some of those projects that have been made possible, some of those improvements that have been made possible in the downtown area because of CDBG funds are what? Can you give us some examples?
Yeah, so River Point Square was a big part of the 2017 downtown revitalization grant, and numerous downtown properties. Property owners can take advantage of facade improvement program that we've had in place for a number of years, and so we're proposing to apply for additional funds to make even more improvements. So, you know, when you're dealing with buildings that are as old as they are in the downtown district, the state does understand that there, it's going to take some additional funds to make sure that those areas are kept up, and that's just one of the ways that we can come alongside the property owners to make that happen.
I think previous uses also have included making sidewalks ADA accessible and things of that nature. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Candace. Any public input? Okay. Hearing none, any further discussion, counsel? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2023-37 is adopted.
And item 14, we'd look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023-38, authorizing submittal of the blight and substandard determination study for the Wyndham Hills area to the Planning Commission for Review and Recommendation.
I'll make a consideration of the resolution 2023-38.
Second.
Okay, motion second. And for some background on this, Andy Colvin, our city administrator.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. So a little background on this. This is a project where it effectively really only applies to a small number of property owners, I believe just one primary property owner on this. And so, when this first came to the city's staff, we felt that this was something that we left it up to the, the redevelopment, the developer themselves to do the study. So this is not something that originated from the city. Typically, what you'll see is, ones that the city will initiate and work through is those that apply to a wide, a larger area, you know, East Omaha, West 275, and things like that. So this one originated really from the owner of the property that this is affecting, and when this originally came to the city, we brought it to Economic Development Subcommittee. And so the Subcommittee then recommended that this kind of give the blessing to the owner and the consultant to complete the study and then bring it to council for consideration. So, this is up in the Wyndham Hills area, the northwest part of Norfolk is primarily residential. I believe the goal of the, ultimately, is to encourage some more affordable housing, workforce housing, and to address some real challenges with, with infrastructure and drainage and, and things like that that are happening with this. I, and staff were not part of the study for, or the actual taking pictures and, and the development of this. This, this didn't originate from staff. So again, JEO is not present tonight for this, but again, this will come back to council at a public hearing. I can promise you that the consultant that did this will be at that meeting, and also the Planning Commission at their public hearing for this as well. They're just not here this evening, because really what you're doing is receiving this and sending it to Planning Commission, and that's it.
So Andy, this is really authorization based on the request of the developer working with a consultant to allow this to go to the first step in the blight study process consideration, blight study consideration process, and that's the Planning Commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions about that?
Again, I, I got what we're going, where, what's kind of criteria, where does this fall under? It looks like there's three removal and dirt work to be done. Where does this fall under the criteria of what was just showed to us on page 79 for the last blight and substandard?
I'm sorry, Corey, can you repeat your, are you looking at the current study?
I am. Where...
You said page 79?
Well, going from the downtown revitalization.
Mm-hmm.
It's actually, this one, councilman's on page 125.
Yeah, okay.
Any public input?
Jim McKenzie, as I reviewed the, the study, the blighted and substandard study, it includes properties that are not part of the developer's ownership, and I kind of questioned if that was in order to make the blighted and substandard designation pass, because the developer's property is all ag, you know, pasture land, farmland, and so pretty hard to declare that blighted and substandard, I think. So, it appears as though this has been developed in order to make that, make that determination pass. Second of all, most of the properties in the Wyndham area right now are half a million, three quarters of a million dollar homes, so I have a hard time with tiffing half a million, three quarter million dollar homes when I think the folks that are going to purchase those homes can pay the extra price that the lots are going to cost, so that the rest of the citizens don't have to subsidize those homes. So, I have a great concern with using tiff on something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
I'd like to be clear, tiff's not on the...
Right.
A redevelopment plan would be submitted if that were to be considered.
Yeah, that's a fair point. Understand Jim's concerns, personal concerns about tiff, but that is not what is on the agenda, agenda tonight. It is consideration of submitting this blight study, this particular blight study to the Planning Commission for initial review.
I appreciate that. I think when Jeff Ray is here and able to explain more about the approach that he took when he, when they took a look at the study area, there will be opportunity to ask those types of questions.
Have there been, have there been any plans or potential plans, anybody has seen to take this from, add to blight? Like, what's it, developers, we can assume it's for, for expansion of, of new homes, but do we know that? Is it, do we know that for sure? Have we seen any plans, any plans?
There has been exploration of that, yes, and it is not for half a million dollar homes.
Initial discussions have included more higher density multifamily type structures, yeah.
And this, this developer is encountering some challenges, and that is why they're exploring the different avenues to overcome those challenges.
Mayor, I have a, a quick question for Val. Has this been advertised for Planning Commission yet?
The downtown has, but not Wyndham.
Wyndham Hills has not been advertised for Planning Commission yet?
No, not yet.
I do think when they come to wanting us to blight the nicest area of town, and they're showing us pictures of dirt and stumps, that maybe, and I understand this is step one of whatever they're trying to do, but I do think it deserves the respect for someone to be here to explain what they're trying to do. This is my opinion.
I, yeah, that's fair, councilman. I would also remind that this actually doesn't do anything but allow the study to be presented first to the Planning Commission and then to the council itself. So there's no, there's, there's not a study in front of us to be, I mean, to be considered by the council right now. The step here is to recommend it first for initial review to the Planning Commission. So it's just part of the process. So, it's just part of the process. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grand Quest, Arnns, Muren, Snorton, Clausen, Hildebrandt, voting in opposition, Webb. Resolution 2023-38 is adopted.
All right, that brings us to the public hearings and related action portion of the council agenda. And item 34, I will open this public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant, downtown revitalization, and the amount of $435,000 for commercial rehabilitation in the form of downtown facade improvements. And to kick off the public hearing, once again, we'll hear from Candace Alder.
Okay, yes, so we are proposing to apply for $435,000 of community development block grants for downtown revitalization activities. We're proposing that $310,000 would be used for commercial rehab in the form of downtown facade improvements. And this would be put into our downtown facade improvement program, which right now is designed as a one-to-one match with property owners and forgivable after five years, as long as they stay and remain open in the downtown district. We're also proposing $90,000 would be used for sidewalk improvements for the three mid-block crossings on Norfolk Avenue. And that would be to make them ADA accessible and have, accessible for wheelchairs and strollers, those types of activities. And that's going to provide street to sidewalk accessibility between second and third, third and fourth, fourth and fifth. The project includes the removal and replacement of 186 square yards of pavement, the incorporation of 364 linear feet of polyurea pavement? Did I say that right, Steve? Marking and the installation of detectable warning panels. So, we came to these activities in a variety of ways. We've done a number of surveys of the downtown district over the past couple of years. We did one in 2022. We did one last fall as a part of the PUMA bid program. And then, we just completed a, a third one. And we do see a need for both of these activities to be seen in the downtown district. We also have a waiting list within our department for the facade improvement program that has about 13 people on it right now. So, take any questions from you.
Candace, that waiting list was created from the last time CDBG was used for that purpose, right? Which was how long ago?
2017 was our last award. And we get calls a lot for grants. People want, want to know if we have any grants available. We typically do not have grants for, for profit businesses. And this is one area where we can offer them alongside businesses and partner with them through this grant.
How, in 2017, do you remember how many property owners made use of those available funds?
I believe it was 12.
12, okay. Which certainly can be argued touched off a high level of investment in the downtown area in general.
Oh, if you look at the former Delay Bank and you look across to ALO and the 411, and, I mean, that, that line of buildings was one of the groups that took advantage of the facade improvement program. They had to pull off a pretty substantial amount of facade to work under there. And so, we've seen, we've heard a lot of great comments on the downtown. We often give downtown tours and just, a lot of people are very pleased with the results.
Candace, you did say that's a match of one-to-one?
Yeah, for the property owners, yeah. And so, they can use it for things like window replacement, tack pointing for their brick, stone awnings, new signage, those types of activities are allowed.
If, if there was an applicant last time, can they be an applicant again for the same property?
Yes, if you've received it, according to the current rules and guidelines that are in place right now, if you've received a grant in the past, if you haven't received a grant in the past, you have priority over those who have. So, in the...
Does it go by property address or does it go by property owner?
Property address is my understanding. And there's a review committee that is selected by the downtown vehicle parking district that takes a look at all those applications and makes a recommendation to staff to put them through the process. And then, they work with Sheila Rios and Randy's division.
I do like the improvements, especially to the sidewalks for accessibility. I think that's really important for that downtown area. One, it says the installation of detectable warning panels. What is, what is that?
Right at the, right at the end of the ADA ramp at the, at a block, that's those, we call them truncated domes as well, but it's that two foot by four foot panel.
I'm sticking with the, on the ADA subject. I know that's been a, that's been a talking point. For the parking, was the consideration for expansion of parking for ADA for those mobile vehicles? I know we had conversations previously about have those folks having difficulty getting out of those, those mobile vehicles with their mobile units and not having enough space in between cars that's beside them. Was that part of the study to expand some of those, those ADA parking spaces so that accessibility is there to get those mobile vehicles out?
There certainly could be expanded ADA parking, especially at the mid-block crossings now, whereas that is not an option. And the way the lines are painted, I think that there would be more wiggle room than you would have in other areas of the downtown. But I would leave it to Steve to elaborate on that one.
I guess, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so generally, right now, we've identified the, the first stall at the entrance to the block and the, and the exiting stall of the block as ADA parking areas. We have not necessarily signed all of those. I think we've signed about half of those. Likewise, the mid-block crossings, we would look to, if we need to add ADA, we would add on one side of that. And obviously, on the, I'm going to say on the exit side of the mid-block crossing, if we stripe those, A, we're going to have the area, but it also allows if you've got a, you know, a van-type ADA vehicle where you need the lift and that lift is on that left side, you'd be able to park there and use that lift. So, as we, as we expand that, we would certainly take those kinds of considerations in, as we're, as we're doing that. In addition to this, there's some other state grant dollars as well that would help us with that. And I have received contact from some, kind of some of that ADA community that needs that access in the downtown area. And so, you know, we, we are looking, I guess, just a message to the community, we are looking to expand our ADA access in the downtown with this grant and others. We also have the Safe Streets for All Grant that we'll be looking at this year that is also a component of that downtown and the ADA access as well.
I'll hit on that just a hair further. Probably about a year ago, I think, we had a vision impaired person with a seeing eye dog that talked about the signals having different sounds all throughout town and even downtown. So, whatever grant might cover that, but that's something for us to think about. I know this is majority of facade, but, but it's something to, to bring into consideration when we're making changes.
Okay.
Candace is, so if I was to apply for this grant, do I have to have the work performed first and then show a receipt for matching funds?
Yeah, so you'd have to get two bids and present those.
Which includes labor and materials?
Mm-hmm. And then, you have to pay for it and then you submit your receipts for reimbursement. We do all of the administration and construction management through the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. They review it, ensure that we're following all the Davis Bacon standards, and then, we work through them to issue the refunds.
One of the things that was frustrating me, Candace, is when I was doing the frontage and signage on my building, all the money's been allocated, but the projects weren't done. So, my project was ready to roll and the return on that investment, the city and everyone wanted to see it a lot sooner than some of the money that was earmarked for future developments. So, what I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, if we have projects ready to roll, do those take precedence over the ones that don't until last minute?
You know, I'd have to look at that process, but I don't know if they have to have, I, I think when they present their application, they just have to have their, their design of what they intend to do.
I just wondered if we could put that into consideration.
Yeah.
When I, when I asked about the funds, it said none were available. Well, I think there was a certain date that had to be spent. And when people were spending the money by that time, what was that worth more than the grain? Where I was already paid my sign, it was up, increased revenues and sales taxes were coming in from the sign. But I wasn't able to get those funds because of the earmarked project that happened a year later.
Yeah, no, that's something we can certainly take into account. When, when an applicant, and this is last year's, or this is 2017's guidelines, when an applicant submits their one-page application, they are also supposed to submit this checklist, rendering of your changes, two written estimates from contractor and subcontractors, the signs, the paint colors, the awnings that you're looking at. And it looks like they require as a part of that application process, and forgive me, I was not a part of that actual process last time. This appears to me, if you present this application with estimates from contractors, that you are good to go. So, I don't know what the holdup was on that, but we can take a look at that. Yeah, I'll make that note for sure.
All right, any other questions for Candace Alder? She's here. This is a public hearing, so anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I will close the hearing and move to item 35 and look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023-43, approving a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a CDBG grant in the amount of $435,000 and authorizing the mayor and/or city staff to proceed with the formulation of any and all contracts, documents, or other memoranda between the City of Norfolk and the Nebraska Department of Economic Development so as to affect acceptance of the grant.
I will offer for consideration resolution number 2023-43, approving a grant application, second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-43 is adopted.
All right, our regular agenda. And item 36, I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5838, creating paving district number 521, providing for paving of South 43rd Street, Madison Avenue, Highway 275, eastbound, right turn lane, and 40th Street, all located in Norfolk 140 subdivision.
Make a motion for consideration, second.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Anna Allen, our assistant city engineer. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. We would like to put together a paving district for the new subdivision. It's an industrial subdivision on the west side of town, south side of Highway 275. This would be just west of that, roundabout at 37th Street. So, there's some industrial lots that are, have been platted out there that will be developed. So, this is for a paving district to pave the remainder of South 40th Street. That goes south from what they've already put in for that Fountain Point development. So, south and then west on, it would be Madison Avenue for about 1,300 feet. And then, it'd be 40th, 40th Street, then connecting back up to Highway 275. So, this would be for 30 foot, 31-foot wide concrete streets with integral curb. And this also includes the, the grading and storm drain along with that project. So, this is all for the paving district. If you have any questions, I can answer them. We also have Rob Duval and Dan Kearns with Shimmer and Associates that have been working on this project for the Norfolk 140 as well.
Hannah, I've just got one question. Is there sidewalks included in this?
No, the sidewalks would come with the individual businesses that buy that, that lot. And then, I guess I should add to that this paving district will be assessed to those adjacent lots.
Anna, is, is that assessment in its entirety? Does the city have any cost share on, on this particular paving district or not?
On this paving district, there will be some oversized costs that's non-accessible for the oversize of the storm sewer in that area.
All right.
Do we have any potential businesses that are going to be on the street or projected to be on the street in the near future, which is pushing this forward?
We do. We've had some interest in a couple of different companies. I know one's come in and, and shared their plans with us and I don't know if you...
Yeah, the developer is Nebraska Machinery on this, on this subdivision. So, we would, you know, I believe they're anticipating that they would consolidate their two locations here in the community to that site. Is that, yes. Engineers from Shimmer are indicating that is, that is correct.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Hannah. Any public input?
I don't know if I have a lot. I'd like to hear from Shimmer, I suppose, just to describe this a little bit more in detail and possibilities. If that's all right.
Okay.
My name's Rob Duval with Shimmer. I'm a civil engineer on the project. Yeah, currently, we only have three lots planted out there. One is commercial, the other two are industrial. The industrial lots are 14 acres, six acres, and 2.3 is the commercial lot. We're working with Flat Rock Group on the cap building on the 14-acre lot. That's, we're working through some budget issues with them right now, but we think we can solve those.
Sorry, possibly one out of the three lots could have a...
They do have an idea to develop the second industrial lot as well.
Okay.
With a different business.
And did you just say at the moment they're having budgetary issues?
Yeah, yep.
So, this may happen in the next year or this may not?
We're working through those. We expect it to be within the next year.
Excuse me?
We expect it to be within the next year.
Maybe this is a question for Steve or Anna then. What are we looking at for a possibility of having this paving in sewer, I guess, whatever? Whatever goes along with just the paving, I guess, it's more than one topic.
I'm going to back up to one of the consent agenda items.
Why Steve's looking for that? What, what percentage of commitment is this, is this company going to commit to this? Even though they're having budgetary issues? I guess that's a little concerning of me. They're asking us to, the next three items are theirs and they're, now they're telling us there's budgetary issues. So, I don't want, I don't want our citizens to get stuck with this.
Yeah, yep.
So, that's a little concerning for me.
So, to, to answer the...
So, to answer the question here, I just pulled up the subdivision agreement, which is included in agenda item number twenty for this, for Norfolk one-forty. Paving, grading, paving, sanitary sewers, so we're showing grading complete by June first of twenty-twenty-four, sewers in April of twenty-twenty-four, and paving complete as well, May of twenty-twenty-four. So they do anticipate moving, you know, moving the infrastructure forward fairly quickly.
So we have benchmarks for, to complete the project, but we don't have any guarantees? Is that accurate?
Would be accurate.
These agreements are all based on assessments of the, to the property owner, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah, all the, the grading, grading paving, which would be one, one group of projects that would be assessed, and then sanitary sewer and domestic water would also be assessed to the three lots. Lot one, two, and three.
Can you, sorry, well, I just wondered, is that the property owner as is now, or property owner as developed?
It would be assessed to, to the developer.
What's a paving district, what's, when we create a paving district, what's the cost in that, what are we doing? Steve.
Anna, in terms of the cost?
Yeah, like, I guess I've never been a part of creating a paving district.
So what we do on these, on the districts, the developer's responsible, so just a good opportunity. As a city, we don't build out our, our infrastructure generally as a function of subdivisions or development. The developer puts in the water sewer and paving. We pay for certain oversized costs, so we require the developer to put in eight-inch water, eight-inch sewer, and thirty, thirty-one-foot street. If it exceeds those dimensions, then we pay an oversized cost for that. So, in this particular case, Anna has the numbers with her. I believe paving was up in the, paving and grading was in the range of about two and a half million. And she can read the water and sewer numbers there. So there's, there's a fairly substantial cost. We roll that in, then, and we charge that back, we assess that back to the individual lots that are in that subdivision, either by linear footage, or by area, or by some combination thereof. In this particular case, we're assessing them to the properties based on square footage. That's the most equitable distribution of the cost. So each of those three lots that's getting subdivided will, will receive an assessment. And, and it can read the oversized costs that are not, not being assessed. It's a, I would say it's maybe, maybe in the range of five to ten percent.
Our, the oversized cost that we have here is twenty-four thousand dollars. The total that would be assessed is two point six million for the, for the paving. So that's, that includes the paving, you know, and curb, curb and gutter, includes the subgrade prep, the foundation course, storm sewer inlets, storm sewer pipe, any seeding, erosion of control that goes along with the construction, and then includes that engineering cost as well. So, that all is part of that.
Could you, Anna, could you read off for each, each of the districts, just read off the total cost and the, and the non-assessable cost?
Sure, so for the sanitary sewer district, the total cost is three hundred and sixty-six thousand, and the oversized cost is eighty-eight thousand. So the assessable cost would be two hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the sewer, sanitary sewer. And then for the water district, we have estimated that the oversized cost would be forty-one thousand. The assessable cost would be three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and then, so that total cost is about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the water main.
So on a new, on a new development like this, then, the assess, once the assessment goes through, first they build it, and then we would assess it. So we probably would assess it somewhere late summer, early fall of next year was when we'd come in and have an assessment hearing, and then levy the assessments. The developer, then, since he would be holding those assessments, they're probably twenty-year assessments, he'd have twenty years to pay those off. However, we require that once they sell the property, so when that property would transfer from the developer to, say, Nebraska Machinery, we require that that gets paid off. So they pay that, is that correct, Randy, they pay that in full at the time of the sale?
That's how we normally write the subdivision agreements, is where that is.
So we do carry that until it's, till that property is, is sold?
It just seems like a lot of money out of our pocket for them really not having to, they don't, they're not obligated to put anything there. But they have to, but we'd be giving them a twenty-year loan for utilities that possibly won't be used. Am I correct?
That's, I mean, that's correct, and that's, go ahead, Randy.
Yeah, they, they would have up to twenty years to pay it off, but I believe, I haven't read that subdivision where normally we put in there that when the property sells, those things get paid off. So it probably will pay off much sooner than that.
So it has to be paid in full?
Yeah.
So are these three lots been purchased then by Nebraska Machinery? So the, so the assessment goes to them regardless?
Yes.
And fair to say the developer's not going to initiate the work on the districts, and till they feel confident they can pay off the assessments. Correct, I mean, that's, they're making an investment in developing a business.
Right, I mean, I don't disagree that there's, you know, we hold, we hold some risk, that, you know, we, we do the assessments, we create the districts, the infrastructure goes in, and then, you know, we're holding basically the bulk of that assessment through a bond, unless they come in and build, and then that gets paid off.
Or the other way, that a lot of this infrastructure gets paid for in some circumstances is through a TEF bond. Correct? And this developer did not ask for a TEF bond on this project?
That is correct.
I respect that.
Is the, is the full, full width of the street, all of this is being assessed, or just the half?
Full width.
This is the full width, the full thirty-one foot.
I think fair to note that paving and sewer and water extension districts are a pretty common course of business when we're developing new land in the community. You look all along that stretch of that particular segment of two-seventy-five, and that's how infrastructure was developed to accommodate businesses investing in the community. Any further discussion?
Thanks for being here.
Okay, all right, short title, please.
An ordinance creating paving district number five-twenty-one in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein, and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-eight carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition to this, I would recommend that we waive the second and third hearing.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-eight carries on second and third.
Item thirty-seven, we'll look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-nine creating sanitary sewer extension district number two-fifty-five, which provides for the extension of a sanitary sewer main for Norfolk one-forty subdivision.
Make a motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion second, and Anna, once again, please.
Thank you, so continuing our, our conversation on the districts in this area and this new subdivision, this one would be for the sanitary sewer extension district, and this would be installation of ten-inch PVC sanitary sewer main. So this would be coming south, it'd be tying into Fortieth Street and Madison Avenue. So it's currently on the southwest side of the Fountain Point building. So we tie in there, and we run that sanitary sewer south, and then west along that new Madison Avenue that what they would be putting in, and then north along the Fortieth.
Okay, thank you, Anna, any questions?
I just got one question, does, would the property owners south of there have to hook onto that at this time?
The property owners to the south, so the area to the south of here, so this is phase one of this Norfolk one-forty subdivision. The owner to the south is the developer, they own that whole area. Those lots were going to be assessed in the next phase. So there would be further infrastructure, streets, water, sewer extending south, so they would be assessed at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Currently, it's just the three lots that have been platted, that are being assessed for these.
Any further questions?
Yeah, one, I guess, maybe trivial, but does this create a loop at least, or is it a dead end on water sewer?
This, this would not be looped in for the sewer. It's an extension from, from what's there now at Fortieth and, and Madison, what comes southwest and, and back around. Our, our city, our city sewer system runs along the north side of Highway two-seventy-five, so not loop back around. The water does.
I think that's the biggest concern, water makes a loop, you don't really want sewer to make a loop.
Yeah, true.
Go downhill, sorry.
And then this, this would be a ten-inch sanitary sewer there, so that's where that oversized cost comes in.
All right, thank you. Any public input? All right, no further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance creating sanitary sewer extension district number two-fifty-five in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plans, specifications, and engineers estimate and collection, connection therewith, and provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance.
Please vote.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings on ordinance number five-eight-three-nine.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings, no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-nine carries on second and third.
Item thirty-eight, we look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight forty creating water extension district number one-twenty-eight, which provides for the extension of a water main for Norfolk one-forty subdivision.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-eight forty.
Second.
Okay, motion second, and once more, Anna, any further?
So this bid item, or, sorry, this item would be for the water extension district. There will be an installation of a ten-inch ductile iron water main. And like we talked about previously, it's going to tie in at Fortieth Street. It already kind of extends down past Madison Avenue on, on Fortieth, and then it'll go west down Madison, tie back into our twelve-inch that we have running along the south side of Highway two-seventy-five. So that will be a loop. So this would be the same, this will be assessed to the lots, which are all owned by the developer at this time.
I would just point out too, councilman, if you wanted to look at the subdivision agreement, at the very end of the, all of our subdivision agreements, there's a section called miscellaneous, and I think there's like ten items listed there. Item two is the item that talks about paying, the requirement to pay off that assessment if that lot is ever sold or transferred.
And is it true, if you pay that assessment off early, there's a little bit of a discount?
That is true, typically if you pay it off within the first fifty days of receiving the assessment bill from the city clerk, there's like about a half a percent discount, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, we'll determine that at the time we assess it, which is based on what we're paying for interest rate on the bond anticipation notes. By statutes, they've got fifty days to pay that without interest, and then we throw in a little kicker on top of that and give them a discount if we don't have to issue long-term financing for that. If they pay it off, what they pay off in that first fifty days, we don't issue long-term debt for. So since we don't incur those costs, we give them a discount for what we save, but we're still paying interest on those bond anticipation notes for that fifty days. So, the discount depends a little bit on what the interest rate is on the notes, which we don't know yet.
Correct.
We will issue those notes probably before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Any further questions? For public input, discussion? Okay, hearing done, short title, please.
An ordinance creating water extension district number one-twenty-eight in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plans, specification, and engineers estimate in connection therewith, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight forty carries on first reading.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading on ordinance number fifty-eight forty.
A second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings, no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight forty carries on second and third.
Okay, item thirty-nine, we look for a motion to consider approval of an engineering services contract with Shimmer Associates for the Norfolk one-forty development district's project for an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion and second, for background on this, Anna, once again, please.
Thank you, for this agenda item, this would be the engineering services contract with Shimmer and Associates for the design of the paving district, the sewer extension district, and the water extension district. So those services include their project administration, their engineering, construction staking, and construction administration for the, the design and construction of these three districts. If you have any questions, again, we do have two representatives here from Shimmer, and I can answer your questions. This will be taken into, this will be wrapped into that assessed cost.
Thank you, Anna, any questions? Okay, discussion? Hearing done, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Right, item forty, look for a motion to consider approval of a, of a contract with A and R Construction Company for the East Benjamin Avenue Trail continuation project for an amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion and second for some background on this, Steve Ramis, please.
Mayor and Council, this is a contract with, proposed contract with A and R Construction to finish out the construction, specifically the paving of the East Benjamin Avenue Trail extension. When this project was originally bid, the bidder was T.R. Harris. At that time, we did not have the construction permit to occupy the Department of Transportation's right-of-way. The project was built, we, we were still waiting for that permit to come. The contractor hung around for about an extra three weeks towards the end of construction, just to see if we couldn't get that permit in place. Ultimately, we were not able to get the permit in place. T.R. Harris demoed from the, from, from the site. And as a function of that, we did a change order and pulled out about twenty-thousand. twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, uh, then out of T.R. Harris's contract um, for that remaining amount of work. Most recently, then, we, we started uh, working with local contractors that were, were under contract here to see if we couldn't get some interest. Um, we did go out, two quotes received, one from A and R Construction for twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. Alcorn Paving also submitted a quote for thirty-seven thousand, three twenty-four forty, uh, and B X Civil declined to provide a quote for the project. The, the work is, you know, at twenty-nine, nine ninety-nine is higher than, than what the, the cost of the work when we removed it. Um, that kind of covered under three different areas. Number one, there's been a fairly significant move in concrete prices uh, since the T.R. Harris uh, bid that, bid the project originally. Um, anywhere in that twenty, twenty-five to thirty percent increase in concrete price since then. Uh, we would also have the, you know, an additional mobile to the site for a contractor. And then due to the length of time that the subgrade has been there exposed, there's also additional subgrade prep and density requirements then to reestablish um, proper density in that soil. So that, that's the, the reason for the difference or the higher price to, to finish it.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Steve, this just connects to the trail on the east side of thirty-five?
Correct. The trail right now ends at the approach into the uh, the Northeast Community College site there on the north side. So that's where the trail ends. So it would extend it from that approach um, all the way across and tie into the existing trail over there along the Frontage Road, along the east side of Benjamin Avenue. The project, uh, the cost of the project, just to kind of run through those, the project was funded, it's about seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. It was funded three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from Northeast Community College, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a grant from Game Fish and Parks, and then the remaining hundred and seventy-eight thousand in the city.
All right, any further questions? Any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item forty-one, we look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to I E S Commercial Incorporated of Holdridge, Nebraska, for the Johnson Park Improvement Project Bid Package Four, Park and Trail Lighting and Electrical Project for an amount of six hundred and fif, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, eighty-two cents.
I'll offer consideration of approval of the contract to I E S Commercial.
Second.
Okay, motion second for some background on this. Anna, Ellen, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm gonna get started on this and then um, if need be, we'll have Nate with our Parks and Recreation um, come talk a little bit too, if we have some further questions. But this is um, one of the five bid packages that we've been talking about with Johnson's Park. Uh, we originally had it as one entire bid package, but um, found that the, that bid was um, over budget. So we've broken them down. So this is um, bid package number.
Four.
Sorry, bid package number four out of the five total. So this is for the electrical in the park. So this is gonna be um, a contract with I E S Commercial. They were the only bidders that we received on July twenty-seventh. Um, we had reached out and talked with a few other um, contractors, electricians. Uh, ultimately, we just received the one from I E S. Um, the, the subcontractor, I E S, is also our subcontractor on the project for First Street and the uh, the change order work that we had put in with United's contract on the First Street project. So um, by having I E S on this portion of the project, it'll, it'll work well um, and reduce any potential for, for conflict between different subcontractors through there. Um, this uh, the bid came in at six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, seven hun, or se, sorry, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and eighty-two cents. Our engineer's estimate uh, for this work was six hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The, the bid package for the electrical includes all of the wiring, the light poles for the park lighting, uh, along the trails within the park, um, as long as, as well as the upper park, um, the lighting for the future ice rink, um, electrical for the picnic shelters. There will be uh, additional electrical going to um, a few different places in the park to tie in for holiday lighting. Um, and then there will also be some conduit and stuff for some, some future, um, some future areas of the park for, you know, sculptures or signage and things like that. So, um, if you have any questions, I can.
Yep, and I got one question. Um, the whole reason we broke these bid packages up instead of grouping them together was because of the astronomical cost. So I guess my question is we, are we breaking these up? What was the original um, estimate we had for this bid package from, I believe it was a Hausmann Construction?
From Hausmann. Uh, I don't know if I have that specific number in front of us.
I would, I would just like to demonstrate that, the reason my question is, I'd like to demonstrate that we are, that we are proactive, and this has been approved, but we are proactive in, in saving as much as we can.
Right.
That's, that triggers my question.
Right, and the way we, we did this, it was, some of the electrical was tied into other bid packages prior, so it's hard to get an exact.
What I, what I.
Apples, apples dollars. But we do have an overall figure of, of what we're tracking so far, that we're gonna be under, under Hausmann.
And that number's two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand right now. Well, uh, that's, that's not, that's not, that's not the right number. Right now, we're tracking one point eight million, one million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand under Hausmann's bid.
That would be over the, over the five big packages.
As a whole, okay.
Of cost savings.
Of cost savings.
Yes.
So we're one point million ahead.
One point eight million ahead right now, yeah. And that's, that's forecasting where, where we want to be with a couple remaining bid packages. We still have the amphitheater structure, picnic structures, and then we have the, the fountain and the ice rink, the, the sports court and then the, and the fountain. So we're still, we're still projecting those. But overall, even with what we're projecting here, we're one million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand under Hausmann's bid.
What was that figure again?
One million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand. So one, a little over one point eight million.
Okay.
Anna, I do have a question for you. You mentioned subcontractors a couple of times. Do you actually have a general contractor overseeing those subcontractors?
So, on this, for Johnson's Park, I guess it would, I E S would be, they would not be a subcontractor. Sorry if I misspoke. They would be the, the prime contractor for the electrical. So they're not working under a prime con, a prime contractor. In the case of the, the areas down by, you know, the pedestrian bridge, the, the work on First Street, I E S is the subcontractor for First Street. They would be a prime on this Johnson's Park project. So part of the reason, you know, we're talking about some of this cost savings is um, by doing more of the construction management and construction administration within the city, with city staff, we're able to recover some of those costs. So between myself, the engineering department, Nathan and his, his parks, um, parks team, we plan to um, work through this project with everybody.
Well, and I would say that you guys have done a nice job, uh, since you broke this out into those five bids, so.
Thank you.
Creativity and extra work, yeah, uh, done by staff to be at where we are on the project right now. So it's good.
Got a, a one question, but I think a statement first. I don't know if it's a statement, but mobilization, when, when you're talking about doing this and, and working with somebody that's in the area, mobilization was only twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, on a six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar bid, I think it's quite low for a mobilization, if I'm thinking correctly, on what it typically would be. Um, so I think that, that helps. That's a benefit. Where, where my question is, um, for, for me to understand, I was thinking that the ice rink was going to be a basketball court and vice versa. Am I wrong or is that two different things?
It's correct. It's the same thing. So it's, the basketball court is the ice rink. So it's the same um, structure, if you will.
So that's where my question falls in on line item number twenty-six, basket, basketball court lighting is thirty-four thousand.
Right.
And then you go down to uh, ice rink.
Electrical.
Thirty-four.
So thirty-four is ice rink electrical complete. So the ice rink, uh, well, let me back up. Well, so the basketball court, um, you know, you'll, you'll have your concrete court for your, for your basketball. That lighting, then we would bring in and provide lighting for that court itself. So whether it's summertime, it's basketball, wintertime, it's gonna be ice skating. So now if you jump down to the um, ice rink electrical complete, this is providing the electrical connections to the chiller units. So there's gonna be three chiller units next to the basketball court and the pavement, and that will be for the chiller units that then essentially pipe the, the water and everything through the concrete. So in this design, that, all that piping is gonna be within the concrete of the basketball court. So it's, it's the electrical to get all of that tied in.
Yeah, yeah, that helps. I wanted to make sure we weren't looking at two different lighting packages. It's like, I understand it's electrical package.
Right, it's, yeah. One's, one's the lighting, the other one's for, you know, putting the chillers and, and everything else. And then same, there's right below that, it says underground electrical service feeder for the ice rink. Well, that's just bringing your main in from the connection with M P P D.
Is there a timeframe for this?
For the electrical?
Yeah.
The um, we, I think when we put this all together, we had said that we wanted um, this done by May twenty twenty-four for electrical. So obviously, there's gonna be a lot of coordination between.
What is that?
You know, electrical and, and when they're putting in trails, when they're putting up the amphitheater structure.
Rubber beds like ice, yeah.
Right.
Any further questions? Or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Any public input?
I am Paula Pennington. I live across the street from Johnson Park. And there are a few people that know me. Maybe not personally, but from my letters to the editor, from my emails to the mayor, to our uh, ward councilman. And I am stunned that over a half million dollars is gonna be put into this park for lighting, um, electrical, and especially, I'm shocked that you've got electrical going to the picnic table areas. Um, and it seems to me that years ago, the talk was to bring Johnson Park back to its past glory. And to me, that was a ruse, because there is nothing that's gonna be similar to what the park was. To me, it seems like it's going to be an amusement center. And I'm curious as to the lighting that's gonna go through the park, um, the lighting that is already there at the, in the parking lot to the south, which is quite bright in the evenings. Um, and it just seems like somebody, I don't know if it's the council, city administration, the mayor, or whomever, seems to forget this is a residential area. There's houses on the north side on Prospect and houses on the east side on Oak. And if you're planning on putting in all this electrical business, how is that going to affect our area? You're talking um, three chilling units for a, for an ice rink. Is there going to be noise to that? Are we gonna be hearing humming, you know, throughout the entire winter? Has consideration not be given to the um, to the basketball courts and ice rink section that was across from the high school? And keep it in that area rather than filling this whole entire park with stuff? You're taking out things that have been put in not too long ago, such as two picnic table pads and the play equipment that ran from the bathroom to Oak Street. And you're gonna replace it. Now, it was just stated that the cost of concrete has gone up, I don't know, twenty or thirty percent. So you've taken out two pads that were good, perfectly good, and putting in three. To me, it's a total waste of money. You've, you've done this expense in the past when it's been um, maybe fairly economical at that time, but at the present time, it's gonna be so much more costly than what it was. You're taking out the grassy area of this park where kids from different schools have come to do activities at the end of scho, the school year. You're taking, you've taken out all the play equipment from, that I stated, from the bathroom to Oak Street, where kids can run for half a block or whatever, going from one end to the other. And you're gonna put in a, a, a cement circle with a um, a jungle gym type apparatus. I don't see any swings that have been included in this. And everything is being connected by cement walks. And the grass is gone. There's grass there, but I don't know how you think anybody's gonna stay on all this cement. Um, I'm disappointed, because there is a basketball court there on the corner of Oak and Prospect. And I asked a long time ago, could this be redone? Um, evidently, the plan is to move that from that spot to the bathroom area. And at some point, it was stated that a bathroom would be put on the corner of Prospect and Oak. This would put a bathroom right across the street from a number of our houses. And who wants a bathroom across the street? It's gonna be bad enough that there's gonna be parking spots across the street, and then you square off that corner and put in a bathroom. You're taking away this whole park concept. Parks are supposed to be grass, plants, whatever, you know, for kids to play. And you're basically flip-flopping everything that's there and filling it up to be an amusement center. I worry about the, the lighting that you're talking about, you know, when you're talking about over a half a million dollars worth of lighting. Um, it just seems, it just is bizarre and it's very disappointing that it got to this point. And um, I question again, you know, are these chilling units gonna have noise to them? Is there gonna be hums that we're gonna have to listen to all the time? I don't know anything about that type of construction, but it would be a concern. And again, we're a, we're a residential area. We don't want and have not wanted an amusement park, and that's what this appears to be. And I, I wish a few more of my emails had been responded to, had been replied to. I did get phone calls. I did get phone calls, and I did have somebody, um, actually come to my house one day when I wasn't there in response to a letter that I'd written to the editor because they thought it was a very good letter and very logical and, and well-thought-out. Whether, whether my conversation with you would have any, have any change, I kinda doubt it. Um, the, sadly, the main conception is that regardless of what we bring to you, it's pretty much ignored, you know, because the minds are already made up. And the equipment's gone, so it's gone. I watched it being torn apart. Whether anything was really saved, I question. Um, so it's just very sad. It just is sad that that, that our park has been destroyed. I guess that's all I have to say.
Paula, thank you for coming forward. We'll try to address a few of your questions here because I think they're fair, um, in regards to interaction of some of the new features with the park and the residential area. So, um, you mentioned lighting and, uh, potential conflicts with the, with the residences. Um, I don't know if Steve or Anna wanna comment on the, uh, electrical plan for lighting and how uh, design did take into account, um, lighting not being a nuisance or, or shining unnecessarily in the residential areas?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit to the, the park lighting. Um, the lighting that we do have planned is, uh, for the trail lighting, they're shorter poles. I think they're about thirteen, fourteen foot tall, shorter poles, and then, uh, the lights within those poles shine down. So it'd be, the light wouldn't be extending out or above. It would be shining straight down on those trails. A lot of the trails where that, uh, lighting's gonna be is kind of in the, what we call the bowl area of, of that, uh, Johnson's Park area. So it'd be kinda down in the middle where it gets pretty dark at night. Um, reasoning behind that is we don't want people walking through the, the park on the trails and, and have it too dark and, and not being
Maintain a safe environment, yeah.
Correct. Um, the other items for lighting, you know, we have the, the basketball court lighting, which would be on, you know, during the summertime, be when the basketball court is in use. It would be on a timer. Same with the ice skating. It would be during those hours of ice skating. Again, those would be pointed downwards towards the, the ice skating rink basketball court.
Anna, can you talk about the, uh, noise from the chillers?
Chillers, yeah. And I think you had that information. I know we had talked about this before with the customized representative.
Yep. So this is, um, they're, they're made for neighborhoods, backyards. They're quiet units, similar to your air conditioning unit. But we're not having them on for very long. As soon as that temperature gets down, they're off for the winter. Um, they're not really running all the time except for the beginning and the end of the season when it's warm. Um, and then if it gets too warm, we're shutting them down and closing up shop anyways. So it's there to get it going, get it started, get it frozen and, and keep it that. If you have some warm spells in the middle of the season, it'll probably kick on, but it's pretty limited.
Nick, what time do we close our parks down? So I, I understand the basketball thing of listening to a basketball bounce. And I don't wanna listen to it at eleven o'clock, but what time do our parks close down?
Generally, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock?
Yeah.
It's quiet hours till seven?
Six or seven, yeah.
And Nate, while you're there, um, another concern Paula mentioned was uh, a loss of grassy areas and open areas in the park. Um, one of the things we talked about with initial design, there, it, it did seem like we were adding a lot of concrete that was scaled back some, but do, do talk about, uh, the grassy areas that will be preserved, the open areas around the amphitheater, and then the addition of playgrounds. So there, yes, there is playground equipment removed right now. But there will be new updated playground equipment, both in the upper story part of the park as it is today, and then uh, new feature, uh, planned for new feature nature playground around the, uh, peninsula, correct?
Yeah, it works. I, I would say with, uh, taking out the, the old road that went through there, we're and it's gonna be level with the, with the river there. We're expanding the, the grassy area and the open space down below. We're gonna have the nature playground, more space for kids to play in more of a, a na, natural environment. And then up, in the upper part, um, with the additional sidewalks, it's allowing for ADA access to get to our shelters and to get to the playground and to use the fountain as well. And I wanna make sure we have, um, uh, good access for everybody. Um, and we've, I think that, um, also has some green space involved in that area. Um, those sidewalks are anywhere from six to eight feet wide, depending on where, where you're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Other pub, public comment?
Name is Tim First, and, uh, I mentioned here ice skating rink. And I think I saw that paper the other night, like two-hundred-and-eighty-some thousand dollars for an ice skating rink? And you want chillers and this kinda stuff? Why? It gets cold here. It makes no sense. And the maintenance on that, you know, you know what that's gonna cost down the road? Probably the first year, not a whole lot, but down the road, it's gonna get expensive. And where's all this money coming from that's going into this park? Find a money tree like they did in Washington, or what? You know, you guys are responsible for this whole town, aren't you? You seem, you're so focused on Johnson's Park and your rocks down there and stuff, that you're forgetting about the image of the city. And I've been in a lot of different cities here lately, in the last couple of weeks, and I wanna congratulate you that this one is the worst for yards not being mowed and for not being cleaned up and this type of thing. The corridor cities are, our streets in this town are terrible. Prospect is a disgrace. Norfolk Avenue, I don't know, somebody finally mowed that down. I don't know who it was, but they didn't do a very good job. There's a house on Norfolk Avenue that you can't even open the garage door because there's trees growing up. Skyview Lake, on the west side of Skyview Lake. If an individual owned that property, the city'd be all over him because you got volunteer trees growing from me to here on the sidewalk. In another six months, you won't be able to walk on that sidewalk. It's ridiculous. You know, you need to focus on the whole city and not just Johnson Park. Norfolk Avenue, East Norfolk Avenue, West Norfolk Avenue. I can give you the addresses if you want them. Thirteenth Street, you know, it's ridiculous. And you wanna be a first-class city, let's clean it up. There's ordinances for people to do that. Let's enforce them. Where's all this money coming from Johnson Park anyway? No answers?
Andy, can you speak to who's supposed to be enforcing?
Say what?
I'm talking to Andy. Who's supposed to be enforcing that, like the weeds and stuff on private property and?
Well, if we're talking public or private property, they can
Public.
Call City Hall and they can, they can file a complaint. Um, and then we have employees that can go out and check that. On a complaint basis, give them an order to, to trim it.
Because the bridge where Skyview Lake's disgusting. And Prospect Avenue, Eleventh and Prospect is terrible. Eighth and Prospect.
You writing this down for me? Oh, I guess.
And, uh, Twelfth and Norfolk Avenue. You know, they're, they're ridiculous. And North Thirteenth Street, there's no sense to that. This is supposed to be a first-class city. Let's get it cleaned up.
We can consider your complaint to be, uh, something that we'll go address then. If we wanna make it official, we can address those properties you just mentioned.
All right, Tim, I, again, I would, uh, remind you, this item we're considering is the bid package for electrical Johnson Park. So anything more to say about that? I think you've got about a minute left.
Because that's, uh, you know, and you never answered the question, where's all the money coming from, from that park?
We've talked about the overall budget for Johnson Park, um, repeatedly over the last few years as we determined how to pay for it. Um, there's, uh, a, a collection of different monies from city parks, the city parks fund, from Keno funds, uh, from fundraising dollars, private foundations, private businesses contributing, uh, to the park. And also, um, some of the infrastructure around First Street coming from our chaff dollars. So that's a combination in partnerships and grants that we saw it over a matter of years. Partnerships formed with the Natural Resources District, grants from the state of Nebraska. There's been no tax increase, um, associated with this project.
And like, where's, uh, where's all the liability gonna come from when somebody gets hurt and goes going down there?
Same place that it comes from on Skyview Lake and all other parks.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present, uh, voting in affirmative, motion carries.
Texas Title Forty-two, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number two with BX Civil and Construction for the Benjamin Avenue Thirteenth Street to First Street project resulting in a net decrease of sixteen thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of change order number two.
Second.
Motion second. And for some background on this, once again, Anna, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, this is our second change order with our Benjamin Avenue project. Previously, we had a change order early on in, um, the project, well, not early on in the project, but last fall um, for a reduction of some bid items and, um, several increases for some different, um, changes in design. This change order in particular is for, um, the, an increase in, um, a few of the items, um, and, sorry, additional items on the project. Uh, one of them being the, uh, after we looked at the box culverts, uh, we saw that there was some, some small, um, repairs that needed to be done on the original box covert that was placed in, like, is? Yeah. Um, so, uh, there's a few repairs that are needed, so we've added that to the BX Civil contract for their box covert crew to repair, which is some cracked ceiling and some, some patching with, uh, with grout. Um, another item was for mechanical splices for the, the box, and those mechanical splices are for the rebar, um, the way they had to, um, cut the, the box top for that to allow still for traffic flow along the corridor. Um, they didn't have enough overlap in their rebar, so they, um, needed to provide mechanical splices to make that possible. Um, another is to, um, add a signal, well, change out a signal arm at First and Benjamin Avenue to allow for a turn signal. Right now, we only have enough room for the signals up there to be just a, a regular signal, so we wanted to allow for that turn arrow signal. Uh, the other items on here, um, a lot of them are a reduction in the project, so there's been, we've identified some overlap with the, with the bid items, um, such as, uh, you know, median concrete. Some, they had, um, a bid item in here for a high-early type concrete, so it's just, we know we're not gonna be using that on the project, so a reduction in some of those bid items.
Very good. Thank you, Anna. Any questions?
We, uh, did talk with the, uh, subcommittee, and we had our infrastructure subcommittee on July twentieth and, um, went through this in detail, and they, um, some, subcommittee had recommended approval for this change order.
Anna, and one of the items that came out of that subcommittee meeting that this was, that this project is on, is on time. It is, it is projected to be on time.
Yes.
Completed on time.
Yep. The, the contractor was there, uh, during this discussion, and they, um, informed us that they will be done on time. That completion date is, uh, I don't remember off the top of my head, mid, mid-November, I think, for substantial completion, mid-December, December for final completion. Um, the way things are, are progressing right now, I see them finishing on time. They had talked about, um, a, a couple of different things that they're planning on doing to make sure they finish this project on time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Anna. Any public input? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, motion carries.
Item forty-three, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with A and R Construction for the West Michigan Avenue and Eighth Street Reconstruction Project resulting in a net increase of fifty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and eight cents.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of change order number one.
Second.
Motion second. And once again, Anna, might as well just park a chair right next to the podium.
You guys should have taken Steve's spot this evening. Thank, thank you again, Mayor and Council. This, this is gonna be the last you hear from me tonight, I believe. This is for a, a change order number one on our West Michigan Avenue project, um, that just started here a couple of months ago. When we started with the subgrade, um, prep in the area around North Eighth Street and Michigan Avenue, it was determined that we had some, uh, unsuitable material in the subgrade. Um, while we did have, you know, a, a good foundation course, uh, designed, we thought the addition of a geotextile fabric for great stability in this area would be, um, needed to ensure that we have that, um, stability in the grade. So the change order is for the increase, um, increase for the project would be fifty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Part of that is, the majority of that is the geotextile fabric. And then when we did run those numbers, that's a geotextile fabric for the whole project. So that would be all of Michigan, all of Eighth Street. Um, there could be some reduction in that if we find other areas that are more suitable material. Uh, the other changes on this change order were the addition of a eight-inch pavement with integral curb. So at the Highway eighty-one and Highway two-seventy-five where we're connecting to the end dot right-of-way, we needed to provide a thicker pavement section in those two areas, so there is an addition to that. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer any questions. And we also have the engineer, McLaury Engineering here as well. He can answer some questions as well.
I don't about this, but kinda following the same lines of what Cory was asking. Shows substantial completion October first. That's still looking good?
October first. Um, of
Twenty?
Yes, twenty-three. Originally, we, I, that might be wrong. Our, um, our completion date, we had anticipated this taking two years, this project, or two seasons. So we'd start this summer, do a portion of the project, anticipating that the West End would be, um, um, in the second year. So I don't know, Stephen, I might have to double-check that if this is a substantial completion October one, twenty-twenty-three?
Yeah, that twenty-twenty-three is probably, probably wrong. I, I would, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but Anna's correct. The, the, the project was anticipated that we would get the majority of it done, probably three-quarters done, but, um, probably that, that portion of Michigan from tenth to thirteenth would be a twenty-twenty-four construction.
Yeah, it shows final pay, payment October first of twenty-twenty-four. I don't, substantial completion. I don't know if it's substantial completion of the change order. Or, or what it necessarily means.
Yeah, coun, councilman, I, I would, I would have to go back and look. I, I, I'm, I'm, I know that we had it set up as, as a, um, a twenty-twenty-four completion. Um, so one of those, one of those numbers there is, is in there. I would say the twenty-twenty-three number is in there. Final completion October twenty-one, or October one of twenty-twenty-four would be correct. Substantial completion was probably, I wanna guess, August of twenty, twenty-twenty-four.
Any other questions?
Just to go back, when we bid that, we had so much work going on here, we weren't sure what kind of interest we might get if we put a twenty-three completion date on that, so we just put it out there as a twenty-four completion date, felt that, you know, there was enough, enough room in this year that we could at least get half of the project done, either Eighth Street or Michigan Avenue, just depending on which, how the contractor wanted to carve it up. A and R chose to kind of carve it up and do the Eighth Street portion and that eastern portion of Michigan Avenue this year. So, you know, I'd say three-quarters of the project would get done this year, but again, completion date, in my recollection, was August of twenty-four for substantial and October for final.
I guess I just have one question, how long until we put that GeoGrid in there, Matt? That'll help with our, the lasting of that concrete, right?
Yeah, so the GeoGrid, we actually, when we did the design, and when McLaury did the design, we had the GeoGrid included in the typical section for the project. We did include a substantial amount of overexcavation due to unsuitable material, so we did anticipate the, you know, that it was gonna be unsuitable, we had the Over-X in there, we had additional crushed concrete to put in there as a function of the Over-X. As A and R opened it up, just the, this, I think anybody that lives down in that area, you know it's wet, you know the water likes to stand down there, that Eighth Street is kind of the, the outlet for that area, so it was just, it was substantially more unstable than we were anticipating, and when you add the GeoGrid, is what this product is, the GeoGrid would be a sandwich layer inside the crushed concrete, and the loading then on the slab creates tensile, tensile movement or tensile strength inside that GeoGrid that supports the load, so it would add, you know, typically, I would say with, without, without the GeoGrid, you might be looking at a forty, fifty-year type design with the GeoGrid, you're probably looking at an eighty to a hundred-year design, so it's, it's, for that small cost of the GeoGrid, I think three dollars a square yard, three, was that what we were at? Three dollars a square yard, four dollars a square yard? It, it substantially adds to the life of that, of that slab and that infrastructure, so it's, it's well worth the cost.
Thank you.
Not a question, but a comment, in addition to Public Works and Engineering having to do a lot of reforming of design and construction standards to make reconstruction, new construction on streets last longer, this type of employment or new practices really benefits these projects as well, so I commend the engineering team and Public Works for, again, being creative about how we built and building to last at this point in time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments?
I did just wanna add to this, we discussed this at our July twentieth, the Infrastructure Subcommittee meeting as well, and the, the Subcommittee's consensus was to move this forward to the council agenda as well. I did get confirmation on the, the date of twenty-twenty-three, the October first, for Eighth Streets to be complete.
Eighth Street.
Eighth Street to be complete, October first, which is not gonna be a problem, they're already halfway done with it right now, and they've already switched to start breaking out the south side, so the contractor actually is, they're moving along really well on this project.
Excellent.
Good news. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item forty-four would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number two with Elkhorn Paving Construction Company for the concrete improvements FY two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three project resulting in a net increase of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of change order number two.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, Steve, please.
Mayor and Council, this is change order number two with Elkhorn Paving, this is part of our twenty-twenty-three concrete repair project. This has to do with the intersection at Elm and First Street, on the, on the west side of First Street. The crosswalk area was extremely spalled, delaminated, had a lot of asphalt stuff, stuff in it. When we got in there to actually start breaking that out, we found out that that's actually the, the lid of a box culvert is, is what forms that crosswalk there. So, we were already into it, being that it was a crosswalk in that condition, it really needed to be replaced, it was a tripping hazard type risk, there was rebar, some rebar that was starting to get exposed. The delamination of the box lid was starting to approach, it was in that thirty to forty percent of the thickness of the, of the lid of the box, so it was starting to approach a, a significant amount of, of spalling into the, into that lid, the, the actual structural integrity of the lid was, was starting to become in question. We asked Elkhorn what would, you know, for a number to go ahead and repair that, they came in at twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. That was about a third of what I expected that to be. I ran it past our construction engineer, Pat Boyle, as well, he agreed that was probably about a third of, of what he would expect to see for a box lid replacement. In this particular case, there's no way to get the, any sort of supporting false work out, once it's, once you make the repair, so there are steel plates that span, span the walls of the box, and then the lid is poured on top of that steel plate, so it's just all, it's all an integral unit. They did bust it out, we, you know, that, if you're over in that area, that, that is completely repaired now at this time, so, again, we did, we did bring this up to the Subcommittee on July tenth, and presented this to Subcommittee, and got approval to proceed at that time.
Thank you, Steve, for that background.
Steve, I can see that box culvert was, was missed, it's not on any plan, has been, nobody knew it was there?
We didn't know it was there.
Where does it drainage?
The, the team, yeah, it, it goes down and drains into, it actually terminates at the, at the new structure, there's a, there's a pipe in the wall of the new structure, the new bridge at First Street.
Okay.
So it empties into the river there.
Just never know what you might find when you start digging, sometimes.
Well, it made sense, I could never figure out why that piece of road wasn't, you know, that crosswalk wasn't such bad repair.
Yeah.
Makes sense, and nobody wanted to dig into it.
All right, any other questions or comments, or input? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item forty-five, look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash forty-four approving a sidewalk waiver requested by Gretchen M. Sandall for property located at eighteen oh nine Kenningsthing Avenue.
I will offer for consideration resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash four-four.
Second.
Motion second, for some background on this, Val Grimes, our city planner, please.
Thank you. So this sidewalk waiver, like I said, is at eighteen oh nine Kenningsthing, it's that new house that's being built, if you're on Norfolk Avenue and look up just as you go west of Eighteenth Street. They are requesting a sidewalk waiver due to the neighborhood on the west side of Eighteenth Street not having existing sidewalks in the neighborhood. If you go on the east side of Eighteenth Street, there is sidewalk going all the way down it, but not on the west side. You'll see in the packet that they submitted as their application that they did go and take pictures of various houses on that stretch that show that there are not sidewalks there, and in Planning Commission, Dave Koppel represented them and mentioned that they do not want to be the house that triggers everyone else to put in sidewalks, and so they are asking for this. And just as part of the waiver that is proposed in the agenda packet, it's kind of our standard waiver for these, that is, one is a temp waiver and in place until sidewalks are installed in a budding area. The development building plan will include provisions and grading for the future sidewalk installation, and the area shall remain free from any landscaping and other development that would prohibit the installation in the future. And then three, the council reserves the right to request the installation at any time, regardless of the waiver. So if you have any questions, either Steve or I can answer them, because he has had conversation with them about their driveway.
I think, yeah, the only thing I'd add to that is when they, when they built their driveway, the driveway does accommodate a future sidewalk, so this house happens to sit up quite high, the driveway is fairly steep, and so we wanted to be sure that we had that two percent cross slope through the driveway at the sidewalk section, and they, and they did do that to meet that requirement.
Would this be a permanent?
It is permanent, based on the conditions that I mentioned, that you have the right to order it in, or when, in the abutting area, whichever, however you interpret that.
Val, during that Planning Commission meeting, were there any neighbors, or any advocates for, or any against?
Citizens did not come out for or against this, it was just Dave Koppel, the applicant representative, who spoke.
Okay. And there, there is a representative from, from Koppel's office here to speak, if, if that's desirable.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Any questions for the representative of property owner?
Voting against this, or saying voting for this, it doesn't tie our hands to not ever have a sidewalk there, correct? There's still possibilities of a sidewalk, at least often do it now.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other public input? Hearing none, please, uh, Planning Commission report, sorry.
On July eighteenth, two thousand twenty twenty-three, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the waiver of subdivision requirements submitted by Gretchen M. Sandall for property addressed at eighteen oh nine Kenningsthing Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the sidewalk waiver request with a five to zero vote.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash forty-four is adopted.
All right, last but not least, item forty-six, a recommendation of the Airport Authority budget presented by Eli Mackey, Airport Director.
Who need to sign in?
Yeah, please.
So what I have in, in front of me today is a couple of revisions that we've made for the airport budget. The dollar amount is the same, however, we have added the bond issue in the amount of six million one hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We've also reworked the salaries, wages, and benefits at the four percent cost of living allowance prior, the prior budget did not have some of the expenses calculated in. I'd also like to reiterate, we have forty-two thousand dollars for building improvements to seal coat D row, we have numerous rows of hangers out here, and the one that started leaking was D row, so we have a ten-year warranty on seal coat for it, and this would cover another ten-year warranty to reseal coat and move forward with that. Also included in this budget is a pavement rehabilitation design phase, which is six hundred thousand dollars, ninety percent of which is federally reimbursable. We have also the bond proceeds that, that carry over from one fiscal year to the next of four million three hundred and seventy-six thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars. We also, as said before, we have an increase of our tax request by one hundred thousand dollars that will cover building improvements and the local burden of the runway rehab project, and those building improvements are the forty-two thousand dollars to seal coat D row and the runway rehabilitation.
Thank you, Eli, so to kind of re-engage on discussion from a couple weeks ago at the budget review session, a primary part of that conversation was the new terminal project and construction costs, which you mentioned is included here, six-point-one million dollar bond. At that time, that bond wasn't necessarily placed within this, within this budget cycle, but that has changed, you've added it in, and the timeline again is to ideally go to bid for that project early next year, early two thousand twenty-four, is that correct?
So what I'm looking at it, I revisited our contract agreement, and we should be ready, or the design phase should be complete in April twenty-four, so we'll, we'll come in front of you again when that comes to, comes to pass.
Okay, so the, design is in place, the process is in place, ready to go, and anticipated to be completed in April twenty-twenty-four? Okay.
The design or the build?
Take it.
In April twenty-four?
Uh, the design phase, currently, we, we have a concept done up already, and that was what was presented last week. I'd like to reiterate, if you bear with me one second, the board has decided to go with the new build alternative as of the May Airport Authority Board meeting, so we, we did make a decision on which one we're going with, and that was, to our knowledge, the best as far as what we have for location. In the seventies, everything, everything airport-related started to go to the north side of the airport, we have more ramp space available there, we have all of our services there, so it would just be more beneficial for us, where we're currently sitting at, to continue improving the north end of the airport.
So the, I guess, what would your final construction date be, twenty-five?
I, I don't have that, that specific date in front of me, but turnkey-ready should be twenty-five, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You say this, the building design was on the May agenda?
Yes.
And?
May Airport Authority Board agenda.
Right, right. Okay. And voted, I assume unanimously amongst that board?
Yes, sir.
Was there anybody there in opposition?
Say again.
Was there anybody there in opposition, do you know, do you remember? You might not even been, you might not have started yet.
That was my first meeting that I started, so.
So he remembers.
I don't know if I remember.
Okay.
What would this building do to our levy? How would it increase it, or would it stay the same?
It, it would increase it slightly, I don't have that number in front of me, but I can get it to you by tomorrow, for sure, and to all, all the council members. I know it would increase it slightly.
Is it, Eli, can you tell us, is the Airport Authority currently carrying any debt?
Currently, they are, we have a couple of hanger payments at zero percent interest right now, and I believe those are a couple of years out before they'll be completely paid off.
What's the mount hold on those?
Again, I don't have that number in front of me, but I'll take note of that.
Any other questions? Again, just for the record, this budget recommendation was initially heard a couple weeks ago as part of the council's budget review session, but there were enough questions that the council had to clarify in some direction provided regarding the, the bond issue, that we asked the Airport Authority to come back and present at this meeting, so. So we appreciate the adjustments and the work done to respond accordingly. Council, is there any further questions before we move forward?
So the four percent COLA that we approved falls on them too?
That's a staff question. I don't, the question, no.
Were these kind of four percent, did you say something about four percent?
Right. Initially, we had five percent worked into our budget numbers because that's what was given to us, I believe, in June, July, that area. But after going to the budget hearing two weeks ago, we reevaluated, seeing as everyone else was getting a four percent. We'll follow suit and go with the four percent.
But you're doing four percent of wages, because the four percent only contains COLA.
So Eli's referring to the cost of living adjustment that the city council approved at the work session was four percent. They're choosing to go with the same that the city has. Their, their employees are not on city payroll. They don't fall under to be city employees for that purpose. So I, I can't really speak to personnel questions that they would have, or that you would have for the airport, excuse me.
Just so you know, Eli, we have not solidified that number yet.
What's that?
We, we have not solidified the budget yet.
Okay.
Any other questions? No comments?
I got one. I was just gonna look at my, uh, the design of the new FBO, but there's, looking at this, we have a FBO hangar. We have, we have a hangar in next year, and I assume it must be the FBO in the following year for, must be for completion.
Correct.
So we're gonna build a hangar this coming year?
That's the idea.
Is that leased, rented, part of the, connected to the FBO? What's the?
It'll be connected to the FBO, and that will be used for transient aircraft storage. So people who are flying in, staying overnight, will be moving out in, or short-term storage, essentially.
Eli, one, one of the questions here, I thought I'd just kind of walk through a little bit with you, was on timing. So you'd mentioned April of having the design done, so you'd be looking to go to bid April, May, be under contract for the new FBO and hangar early summer?
Yes.
And then start, start construction, and you're anticipating that within your next fiscal year, you would spend somewhere around potentially up to one point eight million, mostly on demo, grading, potentially getting the, the hangar itself done within your twenty-four budget, and then the FBO itself, the bigger FBO portion of the facility would then occur in your twenty, fiscal twenty-five budget?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
Can we hit on the twenty-four, twenty-five part of that budget where the FBO would be in there? But then we also have pavement rehabilitation runways and taxiways, which is a substantial, substantial amount of money, eleven, little over eleven and a half million dollars. Is that, is there a matching grant, or grant funding, or is that actually all of our costs? How does that?
So the way that one works, that is ninety percent federally reimbursable.
Okay.
With the FBO and hangar project, seeing, or FBO project specifically, the hangar project, we have the ability to potentially get some grant funding from it federally, seeing as it has a direct impact on aviation. With the runway rehabilitation project, seeing as it has a direct impact on aviation, we can have up to ninety percent federally reimbursed.
And so as we do a budget, we would assume those grant dollars, am I thinking correctly, Steve, on that? We assume those grant dollars in as our budget, but?
I'm looking at page three ninety-eight of the agenda pack.
Yeah, that's what I have opened.
Okay. So that's what they're showing for capital improvement. It looks like they're showing for the pavement rehab of thirteen point five million dollar project. They're showing the FAA funds at five hundred and forty thousand dollars of FAA funding in twenty-three, twenty-four, and eleven million six hundred and ten, eleven million six hundred and ten thousand in FAA funding in twenty-four, twenty-five. Grant funding or general revenue funds in twenty-three, twenty-four of sixty thousand, which would be their ninety percent local match on the five, five hundred and forty. And then bonds, bond, using bonded revenue then in twenty-four, twenty-five for their ten percent match on the eleven million six hundred and ten thousand.
Any further questions?
As being new to the council, I just want to see a step in the right direction to, to work better with you guys and to build a relationship with you guys and, and work towards that. So I hope having you on board, we can have communication throughout the year and, and, I don't know, just build that relationship.
I will say to add to that, Mr. Mackey had reached out to me. We have spoken, and started to build those relationships and coming out to the Airport Authority, so, you know, for that. So they, he is taking a step in the right direction to close those gaps that we have to pass.
That proactive outreach and engagement is, is helpful. And I think it'll go to improving communications and relationship between the city and the airport. As I've said before, we, I think we all recognize how important a piece of infrastructure that is for the city. We want it, we want to maximize its utility and help where we can, you run an efficient and fully utilized airport.
Yeah, I think on, on top of that, obviously some, some large dollar amounts can be spent out there, and I think it's important. That's why I asked the question if there is any nay votes, I guess, if you want to call it that, on the airport hangar. Doesn't, doesn't sound like there is, was any. But it's worth, worth looking at, worth noting. It looks nice. It really does. The, the design, the structure, it looks great. It probably will stand out out there, but it's a heck of a dollar amount.
Do we have, with the FBO and this new hangar, do we have any idea of how, what, what increased revenue we will have as, as we can offer more than we are today?
As of this moment, standing right here, I do not have those numbers, but I can definitely do some research into it.
I think it's also important, you know, as you build hangers, that you kind of get the return on those investments with the hangar. Because it is, you, I would think you'd have a good idea what, what that's gonna serve as soon as you build it. The levied amount is a large percentage of what we levy, is what goes to you guys. So it's important that the money's spent right and that we're getting a return on the investment and utilizing that airport to serve the community, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Any public input? Thank you, Eli. Next one.
The property tax asking is an increase of thirteen
Station your name for the record again, please.
Is thirteen point five percent in one year. That's significantly greater than inflation or the average wage earner in, in town. The budget includes a six million one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar bond issuance. It also includes three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for planning, building, planning and design. So I guess the unanswered question is how much principal and interest payments, what are they gonna be on those bonds and for how long? I, I did some preliminary calculations, and at that six point two million dollars at twenty years at four percent, the annual payment would be roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. If that's the case, that's more than half of their current levy. So I don't understand how the levy can go up minimally and the rest of that be absorbed in their existing budget. I think that's a question that needs to be answered because that's a significant, significant hit to the property tax burden of all the citizens of Norfolk. Currently, the, the property tax asking of the airport is eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That's equal to fifteen percent of the entire city budget property tax asking. You know, the cost of the airport building is almost what the police department building expansion was slated to cost, and will have a similar tax burden on the taxpayers of Norfolk. Is this building more important than the police station? It's gonna have the same, same or similar tax burden. So I, I guess there's a lot of unanswered questions here on this building and the levy, because they'll have to come back to you guys to get a guarantee of levy authority when they issue bonds. And if they're gonna start down the road of spending three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of tax dollars to do building, planning and design, are we sure that the citizens want to support a six million dollar building out there? I think that's an important question to, to know before then. And then the last question I have is, you know, state law allows the city to put this up to a vote of the people. I mean, will the city council allow the people to vote on this? It's a six million dollar building. It's almost as much as the police expansion.
Jim, I think that's where some of my thought or frustration is, to be honest with you. Is it went in front of a board that's a public board, public meeting just like this is, and sounds like nobody showed up. Nobody showed up to put in their input for six million dollars.
I would say this
But they come here plenty, right? Everybody does.
The airport board is off the radar, I think of most people. It's off of my radar, you know, and I come to all this stuff, so. But this is on my radar because you guys have to approve the, the budget. You guys have to approve it.
No, that's tough when it, it was in front of a board to vote on also. It is tough. Yeah, they are elected officials.
Officials with the responsibility of managing, but
I, I get where you're coming from. It's somewhat frustrating that they put six million dollars out there and nobody says a word. If we put six million dollars out there, hell breaks loose.
But you guys are the ones to say whether you're gonna allow the six million dollars to go forward, or you can let the citizens say.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, public input? Okay.
Is there, I, I do have one question. I don't, was this, did this move up a year? Was this on the initial, on the initial budget? Eli, maybe you can answer that, but, or maybe Randy could. It was not on there?
If you remember the discussion, we, we asked that that be adjusted because to, to the point that was made by our public works, if you're bidding out a job that you don't have any financial security or backing for, what gives confidence to any bidders to engage in that process? All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
I have a motion in the second first to approve their tax levy request.
Okay. Did, we didn't do that?
No, no, I would kind of follow the same process as the budget review and have a discussion.
Okay. Is there a motion in second?
I'd make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. No further discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arns, Nuren, Snorton, voting in opposition, Webb and Hildebrandt. We would need five.
I'll vote yes.
Okay. With mayor breaking the tie, motion approved.
We are adjourned.